Good evening. I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for September 25th, 2023. We've had a great beginning to our school year due to the partnership between our teachers, families, and students. It's hard to believe that October is quickly approaching and summer break is becoming a distant memory. With this time of year, our students are preparing for homecoming activities, enjoying athletic events, and engaging in innovative courses that promote positive opportunities for continued knowledge and growth. For those that may be new to attending these meetings, or watching from home, I wanted to give a synopsis of what these meetings are about. We use the first portion of these meetings to honor the work of our amazing students, their wonderful teachers, our excellent administrators, and our hardworking volunteers. Each school showcases their accomplishments in a variety of ways, but this is a way to do it on the county level. It's especially important because we have such a high concentration of military families, and these meetings being recorded give family members who are deployed or living far away a chance to celebrate as well. Once our awards portion is complete, we take a quick break to allow for photos and for families to exit before moving into the business portion of the meeting. That portion includes presentations, policy, finances, and an opportunity for board members to share with the public how they've been engaged in the community, as that's part of their commitment. There's also a portion where citizens can share with the board any comments. I hope that sheds little light on what the purpose of these meetings are and why they're laid out the way they are. I also want to take a moment before we begin to say congratulations to Mr. Shawn Myatt for being chosen as the chairman of the Board of Trustees for New Horizons. That is our CTE program that we share with Peninsula Governor's School and our regional special education program, so it's a very big honor, and thank you very much for serving in that capacity. I'll now read our YCSD mission statement. "The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future." Next, I will share some information regarding our pledge leader this evening, Riley Loper, a second-grade student from Seaford Elementary. She is representing today in her Bulldog Spirit wear. Come on up, Riley. Riley is a model citizen at Seaford Elementary School. She practices kindness and respect for others at all times. She loves school so much that she wants to become a teacher when she grows up. Her teachers make learning fun, and she wants to do the same for other kids. Riley's favorite subject is math, and her favorite book is The Magic Stowman. She said that her friends and the grownups at Seaford are what make her school a great place to be and where she feels happy and safe. When at home, Riley enjoys spending time with her family, especially her baby sister. Please stand as Riley leads us in the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Next, we're going to move into our recognitions and awards, and we'll start off with our seniors of the month. Following students are being recognized for their achievements, and it's great to have most of them here with us. We've got a few who are missing tonight. We'll start off with Bruton High School, Mr. Schaefer.
All right, thank you. Yes, the senior of the month for September 2023 is Nicholas Nick Feldman. His mom is Janine Felsman, if y'all would stand. Okay? Nick Felsman is a proud Bruton Panther who has excelled in many areas. He attends the New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology, and recently earned recognition by the College Board as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. As a member of our school community, Nick participates on across-country indoor track, outdoor track, tennis, scholastic bowl, and debate teams. He is also a member of the Key Club, National Honor Society, and Math Honor Society. And since this is being televised, and I know he's watching, you have one more assignment this year, and that's to beat Coach Barr in tennis, okay? In the local community, Nick is a member of the Youth Volunteer Commission of Hampton Roads. His involvement with the commission provides Nick and other youth in the Hampton Roads area opportunities to serve their community through various community service events. In his day-to-day interactions, Nick exudes kindness and positivity. He is willing to help his classmates and has a kind word for anyone he meets. He is intelligent, yet humble, and willing to problem-solve and consider different points of view. Congratulations, Nick.
Our Grafton High School senior can't be here this evening due to a scheduling conflict because we had to cancel some things Friday night.
Yes, she is a little busy as the drum major of the Grafton marching band that has the game rescheduled for tonight, so I'll read all about her impressive bio next month.
Great, thank you. All right, TAB High School, Mr. Myatt.
Yes, I'm delighted to introduce Heath Atkins as a TAB High Senior of the Month for September. I'd like Heath and his mother Tamara to please stand. And Heath's father is actually couldn't attend this evening, but he is coaching the junior varsity girls' volleyball team against Lafayette this evening, so go Tigers, right? So Heath's a committed, helpful, and creative person who stands out for his academic and personal accomplishments, as well as his exceptional character. He is dedicated to his schoolwork with a GPA of 3.47, an active member of the National Honor Society, and is dedicated to performing well inside as well as outside the classroom. While navigating his academics, Heath finds time to participate in several extracurricular activities, to include his high school basketball and soccer teams, and track and field. He serves as the captain of the varsity soccer team, where he helps lead his teammates during practices and games and organize his team-building events. Heath is an avid lover of sports. It's no surprise that he participates also in club soccer and club volleyball outside of school throughout the year. When Heath is not on the court or on the field, he offers to help others in a variety of ways. He enjoys assisting others through tutoring, mentoring his teammates, and helping at his church every Sunday with fourth and fifth graders. Heath enjoys seeing others succeed, which became very apparent last year when he offered to tutor other game-design students at TAB. Heath aspires to take his passion for game design even further by studying computer science once he graduates from high school. We are excited about Heath's future endeavors, and we are fortunate to have Heath as a TAB High School Tiger. Thank you for your leadership and powerful personal example. Very quickly, I'd also like to acknowledge Heath's parents, Tamara and Wally. Tamara's a physical educator at TAB Middle School, and both Tamara and Wally coach at the high school level and are youth leaders in our community. And again, we're thankful for your service and your commitment to making our schools and our community better. So thank you very much.
I have the honor about presenting Madison Caldwell. If you would stand up with your family, David and Marty Caldwell, and your sister. York High School is proud to recognize Madison Caldwell as our September Senior of the Month. Madison is a spirited falcon and a pleasure to have at York High School. She leads by example and has a strong moral compass. Madison embodies the true spirit of leadership and academic excellence. Her extensive involvement in several student organizations speaks volumes about her commitment to making a positive impact. As the president of the Student Council Association, Madison has shown exemplary leadership skills, guiding our student body with dedication and integrity. She is also president of the Latin Honor Society and the English Honor Society, demonstrating her passion for languages and literature. In the academic arena, Madison is a shining star. She currently ranks in the top 10% of her class. Her achievements as an AP Scholar and an International Baccalaureate Program student are commendable. Her membership in the Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta exemplify her dedication to scholastic excellence. Furthermore, Madison has been honored with prestigious awards such as the William and Mary Leadership Award and the College Board National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. Madison, we're incredibly proud to have you as our September Senior of the Month. Congratulations. Next, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards and our Volunteer Awards. Dr. Shandor is going to go down front, and I'll ask Barbara Nagel from Seaford Elementary, our principal, to step forward and then remain down front while we present our Student James Bardemini, come on up. James is a proud Seaford Bulldog who seeks opportunities to make a positive difference for his school community. Last year, he was responsible for collecting the breakfast-delivery cartons daily for every class. During this time, it was not uncommon for James to assist students and staff in the hallway as needed. He consistently practiced respect and kindness, serving as a role model for all students. James says that he is honored to be a part of Seaford because he feels safe, cared for, and he appreciates how his classmates are really there for one another. James emphasizes, "You don't see that everywhere." He almost got me choked up. James has earned the honor roll every marking period, every year. He likes all subjects and enjoys learning new things. He shares that although he has had great teachers each year, he has a special bond with his fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Stratton. James explains that she really knows how to help students if they get stuck on a problem, and she believes in you and never gives up. He states this is important because she models for you how to believe in yourself. James credits his parents for always being there for him and for teaching him to be responsible, to always tell the truth, and to work hard to do your best in everything you do. He aspires to one day attend Virginia Tech or Christopher Newport University, play professional soccer, and design and repair cars and computers. Congratulations, James. We're really proud of you. All right, due to a scheduling of after-school events from our Friday, our Grafton High Student Service Award recipient will also not be here, but we'll honor her in October. All right. Erica Richards? Erica Richards also isn't here. All the Grafton folks aren't here. All right, next, we're going to move into our ASBO Awards, and first we have our FY23 ASBO Meritorious Budget Award. We have a presentation of one award to Mr. -- when I call your name, if you're going to -- come on up. Okay. To Mr. Bill Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Heather McGelett, Payroll Supervisor, Ms. Allison Brabrand, Budget and Financial Supervisor, Ms. Elizabeth Hall, Budget and Financial Analyst, and Ms. Margaret Kirk, Manager of Accounting and Finance. The York County School Division's Fiscal Year 2023 Budget was awarded the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. This is the 25th consecutive year that the School Division has earned this award. This award represents the highest form of recognition in governmental and school district budgeting. To receive the Budget Award, the budget must meet nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, be technically well-prepared, and be easy to understand. The Budget Award program is designed to encourage exemplary budgeting practice. Congratulations on a great job, team.
Way to go.
All right, next, we'll ask Ms. Amber DeRozier to come to the front for a special recognition. This evening, we recognize Ms. Amber DeRozier, Accounting Analyst for her outstanding achievement and being awarded a $2,000 scholarship from the Association of School Business Officials International. This prestigious scholarship recognizes emerging leaders in the area of K-12 finance. This scholarship will enable Amber to further her professional development by attending the upcoming ASBO International Conference and Expo in October. Congratulations, Amber, and we commend you for your dedication and commitment to YCSD. Next, we're going to go into our NSPRA Awards. I'm pleased to share that the YCSD Communications and Public Relations Office received two awards for the National School Public Relations Association. The NSPRA selected two projects as winners in the 2023 Publications and Digital Media Awards Program. The two entries were selected from among more than 1,000 submissions, and they are: An Award of Excellence for our Handbook for our 2022-23 Student Handbook and Conduct Code, and an Award of Merit for our Branding or Image Package for the FY23-27 Strategic Plan. Accepting on behalf of the department are Ms. Catherine Goff, Public Relations and Communications Officer, Mr. Jason Short, Digital Service and Applications Development Manager, and Ms. Brittany Bateman, Coordinator of Digital Media and Design. Congratulations to you, team. Next, we'll go into our York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, I'd like to invite Dr. Kermit Ash via -- to the stage, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member, and assist Dr. Shandor as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Riley Loper, a second-grade student from Seaford Elementary School for reciting the Fledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipient, James Bardemini from Seaford Elementary School. And Prachi Patel will be with us next month. We also congratulate our seniors of the month: Nick Felsman from Bruton High School. And Gwendolyn Moore will be with us next month. Heath Atkins from TAB High School. And Madison Caldwell from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education, Incorporated, in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. Walmart gift card is also being donated by a foundation supporter. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients.
Hold in place. Anybody who wants to come up and take pictures, go ahead and do that. Don't try to do it from your seat. Just get up and do it from me up. Is that everybody? All right, congratulations again, everybody. Next, we're going to move on to our Accent on Academics. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Garals. Good evening, board members. Last May, TAB Elementary School students in grades K through 5 applied creative communicator skills to showcase their learning on various grade-level standards in writing, science, and history. Kindergarten and third grade students demonstrated their understanding of habitats and ecosystems using various styles, formats, and digital technology. In addition to sharing their work with families during a family engagement night, the grade levels connected during the school day so that third-grade students could help the kindergarten students make the connections between the kindergarten and third-grade standards of living systems and processes. This enabled the third-grade students to become the teachers for the younger TAB Tigers. Ms. Beth Welch, TAB Elementary School Principal, will share more details and introduce their presenters.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and guests. Tonight, we're excited to share with you a small piece of our Creative Communicator event we held last May. This event was an evening built to showcase students' work as a soft launch to this year's student-led conferences. Little did we know that these creative communicators in kindergarten and third grade would do more than showcase their learning with their families and classmates. These grade levels connected over their learning of habitats and ecosystems and turned their excitement for teaching their parents to teaching each other. I will now turn it over to kindergarten and third-grade teams.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to share our learning experience at TAB Elementary. I am Lori Register, and I teach kindergarten. This evening, we have some presenters who are very excited to share about our Creative Communicator Night. You will hear from students and parents in grades K and 3. We'll start our presentation with Mrs. Dodson, a parent of a kindergarten and third-grade student.
As a kindergarten teacher and parent, it was really remarkable seeing my daughters use what they learned about their ecosystems to create such amazing things inside their classrooms. Just to see how confident they became and how they were able to teach others about what they had learned really impressed me. All of it was student-led, which really brought out every student's strengths. They could work as individuals and in groups. There was so much hard work that went into building, creating, researching, and designing it all. So when they were finished, they both felt such an amazing sense of pride and accomplishment.
Hi, my name is Ava Cristora. In kindergarten, we had to choose an animal that lived in our habitat. Every classroom had a different habitat to learn more about the animal we chose. We had to do research using Pebble Go. This is a learning app on our iPads. This helped me know more about my animals, so I could create my habitat and then show my family what I learned when they came to our Creative Communicator Night.
Hi, my name is Ellie Dodson. After choosing our animal, we got to create boxes to show our habitat. We used show boxes that we brought from home. Our teachers gave us a bunch of craft supplies, and we picked what we wanted to create our boxes with. After we made our boxes, we turned our classroom into an ocean. We worked together to decide what would be the most important parts of our habitat to show in our room. We made all kinds of different things to show what we learned.
Hi, my name is Chania Gray. My class created habitats for animals that live in the ocean. These are some habitats we made in my class. We brought it in some -- a shoebox from home and painted it to match our habitat. Then, we cut shapes from foam, twisted pipe cleaners, and glued pom-poms to create the needs of our animals. We choose items found within our habitat that our animal needs to survive to complete our habitat. We placed our chosen animal in its new home.
My name is Josiah Christopher. For third grade, our planning process began to make a space. We were tasked building our first Miki-Miki ecosystem, which was super cool. Ms. Johnson taught us a little bit about the ecosystem, but then we had to take over the research using Pebble Go. Next, we had to create a plan for the classroom. Ms. Johnson told us that we were becoming grassland experts. Our class gave her a ton of ideas. And the awesome things that is she let us do pretty much all of them. We used Pebble Go, World Book Online, our science textbook, and Discovery Education to help us become experts. We each chose a project to work on. We had to work in groups. Working in groups made our jobs seem easier, because I had somebody -- I had someone to talk to when I was stuck or needed help with my ideas.
Hi, my name is Duke Pasquale. We brought our dioramas to life by incorporating technology using a coding invention kit called Miki-Miki. My classroom was the rainforest, so after learning about conservation, we reduced, reused, and recycled materials to create the ecosystems in our classroom. I even brought ivy vines from my own yard to recreate the vines found in a rainforest.
Hi, my name is Brooke Manyachi. We researched and found the animals in our ecosystems. My class was the ocean. We focused on making connections between the living organisms and their environment. Then, we created the different food chains we found in our ecosystems. I even took recyclables from my recycling bin to put in the nets to show human impact and pollution in the ocean. Our class wanted to make help for us, so I came up with the idea to put one in front of our door. We wanted to make people feel like they were truly immersed in the ecosystem. I think that was my favorite part.
Hi, my name is Lyric Jackson. We also had gallery walks within each third-grade class, so we were able to see the other ecosystems. We hiked through a rainforest, waded through the waters of the oceans, walked from the savanna to the forest, explored the desert, and made it back in time for resource.
As the classroom finished preparing their rooms for Creative Communicator Night, the kindergarten students noticed the third-grade classrooms and how they looked similar to what was being done in their rooms. They asked if they could visit the rooms. The third graders were excited to welcome the youngest learners and to have the opportunity to teach them about their ecosystems.
Hi, my name is Lani Dodson. During school hours, we presented our ecosystem to the kindergarten students. It was a great experience to show the kindergartners what we built. They had so many questions, and we were the teachers. They wanted to know how we got our Miki-Mikis to work. They kept saying that they couldn't wait to do this when they got to third grade. Did you do this all by yourself?
My sister and I both did research about sea animals and the ocean. I learned more about ocean layers when I went into the third-grade classrooms. It was cool to see how they decorated their room all by themselves. It really looked like the ocean. It was fun to have the third graders show us more about how the Miki-Mikis work. We even got to try it ourselves.
Here in the middle of the screen, you will see a video of our kindergartners, Jake Miracle. As classrooms were being transformed, he passed by the third-grade classroom several times. On Creative Communicator Night, he walked his mom to one of the third-grade rooms to check out the ocean ecosystem. He was so intrigued by the technology being used, he couldn't wait to show his mom. We would like to thank you so much for your time this evening. We have a small token to remind you to take care of the planet as it takes care of you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Absolutely. You guys did a wonderful job, wonderful job. Board members, questions or comments?
How long are you allowed to keep the classrooms decorated like that?
The last day of school.
That's great. I think Dr. Shandor and I visited while you guys were setting these up, so we actually got to see the students working on their presentations, and they presented to us. I learned a lot about a lot of the animals. He learned a lot about a lot of the animals, so I think it was really great, and them just sharing with each other in the classroom. They're not just doing research for themselves, they're doing research and sharing it, so I think it's really great. And did -- Ms. Pulch, did you say at the beginning that this is kind of a precursor to doing student-led conferences?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know that Seaford Elementary School, I got to see those. They are amazing. I know the parent feedback from those is excellent, and so I really can't wait to see how this translates into that, because we're letting them be, lead the charge, and telling everybody what they're doing. That's great.
I'd just like to say that I never knew a sea turtle could stay underwater for seven hours. That's quite impressive. But my question is, who had more fun, the kindergartners or the third graders?
That's excellent. Any other questions or comments? This is really wonderful. You guys did a great job. Thank you very much for being here. All right, we're going to take a short recess, so we congratulate our winners, and they can get some photographs. We'll be right back. We will now reconvene the meeting, and we'll move into unfinished business. Any unfinished business? All right, seeing none, we'll move into our presentations. And we have our committee updates, so I will ask each of you. We'll just start down there with Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, sure. Again, I wear a couple of different hats, so I'm a member of the CTE Advisory Committee here in YCSD, and also the chair at New Horizons. So I'll kick off with the Division and then roll into New Horizons real quick. Hey, over the summer, and frankly, the Accent on Academics that -- the presentation we just received is a perfect example of this. The Virginia Department of Education awarded seven school divisions in the Commonwealth, of which YCSD was one, an Innovative Practice Award that recognizes ongoing efforts to provide STEM-focused curriculum in our elementary and middle schools. And as you know, we have a very robust Career Connections program that's aligned with our strategic plan. That's also award-winning as a framework. And we received some additional recognition, and it was focused again on STEM curriculum. And our Makerspaces in the elementary schools, Summer enrichment camps, career exploration, and STEM-related club activities. And as you may know, we've expanded our clubs and our STEM-related clubs significantly over the last couple of years. So again, congratulations to the team as a whole. Innovative Practice Award from VDOE. In addition, again, within YCSD, we want to sustain last year's momentum. As such, our career coaches and advisory committee are preparing to continue our fall program. We have a series of anchor events from a CTE standpoint. One will be our mock interviews that we'll host during October, November, primarily for students in the Economic and Personal Finance classes. They did volunteers who helped us out from the community. We conducted nearly 1,000 mock interviews. Students prepared resumes, they prepare for the interview process, and that whole lifecycle, again, so nearly 1,000 students through there. And then we'll also host our Engaged NYCSD Partner Appreciation Night sometime during the fall timeframe. And our next CTE Advisory Committee meeting is the end of October timeframe. So we're looking forward to that. Now, with regard to New Horizons, we conducted our organizational meeting, the latter part of August, where again, the Chair, Vice Chair, and then numerous other administrative positions were selected. We also affirmed numerous policies. As you know, it's a regional activity or organization, so we reaffirmed our policies across the region. As you may know, there are seven centers across five locations on the peninsula. So we received updates on several initiatives with a focus on Newport Academy, which is a regional public separate school facility for students with emotional disabilities. And then the Center of Autism, which again, services those regionally with autism. And real quick, we, there are multiple initiatives ongoing at those two centers. We received an update on those. And specifically, they gave us an update on developing after-school engagement and connectedness with families and students, and that's going very, very well. They also have received a substantial grant to utilize job-embedded coaches at both locations to assist the professional development of teachers. So that's all very good news. And then they also participated or conducted an extended school year program, which was wonderful, and it was a day at the beach was the theme, if you will. And there were a number of different things that they did for all the kids, again, at both centers. It was very, very successful, particularly the ESWI dynamic. And the goal in line with the strategic plan is to continue those efforts. So again, it was an excellent meeting. And our meeting, as I said, with, from a YCSD standpoint, for CTE Advisory Committee is the end of October, will be the next meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. Mr. Reganbotham?
Yeah, the Gifted Education Advisory Committee meeting is actually tomorrow evening at the Yorktown Public Library. I'm looking forward to participating in that. But if you remember, at the end of last year, we had a role in helping select some high school students to represent their schools and the programs. And so this will be the first official meeting. They were invited last year for the last one. If they're able to make it, this will be their first official meeting in that capacity. So I'll have more to share with you next time.
That's great. I can't wait to see how that goes with the students being able to give input. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. Last week, the York Foundation for Public Education had their meeting, and we went through the whole calendar as far as all the times that we're going to be raising funds through this next year. And I would encourage anybody that would like to help raise funds for the school to join the York Foundation for Public Education. YFPE gives out thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in scholarships to students, to teachers, to further the learning in the classroom. I mean, it's all for the children. It really is. And everything that happens, every dollar that YFPE gets goes back out into our schools. So it is a, it's a great opportunity to take part in the schools, and it's a great time to join, because they do need help. And they do a lot of fundraising throughout the year. And like I said, everything goes for the schools. And we have our next meeting, I believe it's on the 21st of next month.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I'm on the WHRO Committee. If you watch public television, Channel 15, WHRO. They just released their annual impact statement. It's a 16-page report, so I'm not going to go through all that. But it talks about all the programs and resources that they provide to the schools in the area. And that is published on Board Docs. I had that uploaded today on Board Docs. I'm also the Regional Vice Chair for all the school boards in the region, from Virginia Beach all the way over to Gloucester. I kind of got thrown into that position near the beginning of this year, and I'm still learning that role. But I'm actually up for Regional Chair at the State Conference in November. So we'll find out in November if I get voted in as Regional Chair to take over that position for two years. But that's all I have. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Yeah, obviously, the year's just started, so some of our committees have not met yet. Neither of mine have. I have, the Special Education Advisory Council meeting is tomorrow night. I'm sorry, next week. And then the York County PTA meeting is next Thursday. So I'll be able to give updates on those. But if you are a parent with a student who has a disability, I would encourage you to look up Student Services on our website and find out what SEAC is all about. You don't have to become a member, but you really can come and just get a lot of information about resources to help your student. Those are great meetings, very, very informational. And then, of course, with York County PTA, they actually oversee all 18 PTAs in our schools, so they have a big job. And all of those PTAs have been busy over the summer, scheduling and these, and planning activities. And again, I'll give another plug. I encourage everybody to join PTA at their school. I know I'm a member of every school in my district, so I'm able to see a lot of the things that they're doing. And again, just being a PTA leader in the past, I know how important that is, to have that involvement. So I would encourage everybody to do that. And then we'll have some more updates, again, after all these meetings happen next month. Next, we'll move into our FY24 Pay Plan update. Dr. Shandora?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Geraltz. Again, good evening, board members. Someone asked Dr. Dave Wright, Chief Human Resource Officer. Will please come to the podium to share some brief information related to the FY24 Pay Plan updates. Dr. Wrights?
Thank you, Dr. Shandora. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandora. This evening, I will provide a brief pay plan update for your review and consideration. The proposed position of adding one FTE supervisor of school safety and emergency management position to the pay plan was discussed at the last work session. This position will support YCSD's commitment to ensuring safety for all students and being our top priority. The other is, while the number of grants awarded to the school division in addition to other funding sources continues to increase, the Instruction Department has an even greater need to provide support to balance both grant and locally funded programs and responsibilities which support the addition of a Secretary III financial to the Instruction Department. The Division has incepted nearly $20 million in grants since the hiring of a Grant Coordinator/Writer in 2021. And that is it for my pay plan update, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights. Board members, questions or comments?
Nope. Important logical step, both regarding the school safety supervisor, somebody who's singularly focused. I'm very pleased about that. And then I'm not surprised about the Financial Secretary. That's a good thing. And we knew that if we brought in a Grant Writer, that this would occur. And so we're real pleased about that, too, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Wrights.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights.
Next, we'll move into our public participation at board meetings. Before I open up for public comments, I'll share some remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students, how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Because this is just a comment period, board members and staff listen and take notes, but don't respond. If citizens indicate that they are seeking a response from staff, a staff member will follow up. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and address. Our first speaker tonight is Delphia Hedgesbeth.
Good evening. My name is Delphia Hedgesbeth. My husband, Don, and I have been residents of York County for 43 years, moving here in 1977. It's beginning to feel like home. At that time, our two youngest daughters enrolled in York County Elementary, one in second, one in fourth grades. And our oldest entered York High School as a ninth grader. Subsequently, all three daughters graduated from York High School. With that excellent foundation, our daughters attended and graduated from college. One from University of Virginia, one from JMU, and one from Virginia Tech. The rest of the story, and the good news is, in my opinion anyway, these girls finished college, married, and had families of their own. And their career paths allowed each of our daughters to return to York County to rear and educate their own children within the York County School Division. And I think that complements the York County School Division. The oldest of my grandchildren, just for your information, has just completed his master's degree from American University. He went to William &amp; Mary first, but he's on his career path. But he got his foundation in York County. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight because I felt compelled to say thank you, even though I don't know each of you personally. That doesn't matter. What matters is that you're serving on the school board for York County. And I'm here to thank you for the time, your expertise, your commitment, and the effort each of you has given to enable the York County School Division to be rated one of the best in the state of Virginia. And I think that can be exemplified by the fact that when President Biden was looking for a school division, a public school division to visit, I don't know who recommended York County, but somebody did. And he came to Yorktown Elementary School. But at any rate, my purpose of being here tonight is just to thank you for the time, effort, and interest that you give and are giving to the York County School Division. I just wanted you to know that your efforts are appreciated beyond measure. So thank you, thank you. This is my grandson's, this is our private signal when we've done good. So you've done good. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Michael Peterson.
I'm Michael Peterson, a resident of York County for 19 months, ma'am. I've come here tonight to ask a few questions of you, and I would hope that when I say that I, would you please deem my questions as requests for records under the FOIA? The board members decided that the taxpayers needed to spend more on the top five highest-paid employees by granting new contracts, but they provided no information why. Superintendent's contract would have expired in 2025, but the board saw fit to extend it to 2027, even though there was no deadline. It was merely a requirement that he be consulted and negotiated with. Which board member suggested reopening his contract that early, or was it his demand? Why did the board and superintendent refuse to provide the board's annual evaluation of the superintendent when they could have agreed to provide it? It's not prohibited to be provided. For the highest-paid administrators, the board pays the health insurance for the administrators and their families, allows them to cash out leave time, and pays deferred compensation in addition to pension contributions. Does it do that for teachers and support staff? Why do the highest-paid administrative employees get the benefit of any across-the-board salary increases for teachers, although they do not teach? At the last board meeting, an employee presented a slide about teachers' salaries rising 20.76% over five fiscal years. What has been the increase over that period for the superintendent and the other 14 highest-paid employees of the division? Now about the ethos of the board. Why are board members allowed to vote for budgets, which includes salary increases for members of their family? Have any of you ever recused yourself from doing that? Do you have an opinion of counsel that says that's appropriate? Please provide it. To sum up, a couple more questions. The board, the Chair makes an announcement prior to public participation, which is more restrictive of free speech than the board's written policy and the United States and Virginia constitutions. Why does she do that? What is her goal? Have you ever had a board member inquire as to why a certain book is in one of the school libraries? If so, what was the book? The board has a policy to self-evaluate on an annual basis, but a public record request found that there was no such record to be found. If there is not self-evaluation, why do you have a policy that announces it? And should the board start to present answers to the citizens who are asking questions?
Thank you.
Finally, should the awards presentations be held at a time separate from the board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gary Porter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. My name is Gary Porter. I reside in District Two. You may recall that I addressed the board at last month's general meeting. I challenged the board members to read a book found in the Grafton High Library, which shares its shelves with the middle school. I claimed that the particular book was pornographic, and I challenged the board to read it and see if they agreed with me. Due to my advancing years, I misread the title of the book from my notes and announced it publicly as "Fam Home." When I got home that night, I realized I had given the board the wrong title. The book was actually called "Fun Home." I immediately sent an email to all five board members, apologizing for my mistake and giving them the correct title. I received quick responses from two board members and none whatsoever from the other three, which I found surprising, since two that night had made remarks about how they loved to receive emails from their constituents and engage in dialogue. I want to publicly thank Mrs. Geraltz and Mr. Richardson for taking me up on the challenge, for reading the book, and for agreeing with me that the graphic pictorial depictions of oral sex that it contains did not contribute to the educational mission of York County Public Schools. I was told the book would be removed forthwith, and I assume it has been. At least, it is no longer shown in the school inventory. But this begs the question, who in the school division thought such a book did contribute to the educational mission of YCSD? Was it a teacher? Was it a librarian? Just who did that? If this book was donated by a citizen, is there not a screening process in place to ensure pornographic materials did not make it to the library shelves? Inquiring minds wish to know. There are other books containing pornographic depictions in the libraries, and I will bring these to your attention as my time and stomach for reading such material permit. I also wish to bring to the board's attention- I also wish to bring to the board's attention the annual Annenberg Public Policy Poll of Constitutional Knowledge. Annenberg does this each year in August in advance of September, which is constitutional month, so that they can announce the results in September, and they were released recently. Unfortunately, it's a poll that, once again, Americans failed in alarming numbers. Two examples: only 5% of respondents could name all five of the freedoms found in the First Amendment. This isn't rocket science. Freedom of religion, freedom of assembly, freedom of press, freedom to petition, and freedom of speech. Only 5% could name all five. 20% could not name a single right found in the First Amendment. Since 90% of Americans are publicly schooled, this does not speak well of our public education system. So I would suggest that the YCSD administer a similar poll to your seniors and see how they do. I will be happy to help find that poll.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Next speaker is Sandra Tummenello.
Hello. I'm Sandra Tummenello. The advantage of living a long time is you have a whole lot of experience. And I have a whole lot of experience with schools, and I love it. I love schools, I love education, I love children, and it's been very rewarding that I spent at least 50 years. And my experience has been very, very diverse. I was at the American Community School in Ethiopia as a guidance counselor, where we had 60 ambassadors kids, so that was quite a group. Then I was at Hampton Roads Academy, which is strictly a college preparatory, and I was a college and career counselor there. Then I went from there. We were moving, and books orders would change, and I resigned and helped choose my replacement for HRA. So, he told me I could stay if I was signing a three-year contract, but I didn't think that was fair to the person who was replacing me, so I reluctantly said, "No, I won't do that." I then went to Huntington Middle School, and if you can imagine, HRA and Huntington, we're talking some differences there, where 60% of the kids were on reduced lunch. And from there, I went to Gildersleeve, and then I volunteered at Minchville after I retired as college and career counselor. And one thing that I've noticed, whether it was public school, private school, whatever, kids were kids, and families were pretty much families, and kids liked to learn, and respect was honored, and things went very well. But I've noticed things are slipping now across the world, and I'm not talking about York County. I think that York County is above most, you know, when you read about Loudoun County and the different ones where horrendous things are happening. So, I thank you that things have not gotten to that point, but I just think it's time for us to really look at our values and what's taught. Back when I went to school, maybe some of you, you're not quite as old as I am, we had the Ten Commandments posted in every classroom. We said the Lord's Prayer. God was talked about, faith was. Our founding fathers built the country on it, it was taught. But I've noticed that none of that's taught anymore, and none of that's allowed. Prayer is not allowed. I've even heard students being told that they cannot bring their Bibles to school, which I cannot imagine. So what I would like for all of you to consider is thinking about trying to bring some of that back. Be radical. Put the Ten Commandments in the rooms. Teach kids about God, who created them, and He created them male or female. And if you choose to believe there are 60 sexes, then I think you're slightly crazy, and you shouldn't be working with kids. So there's a lot that can be done, and I would suggest that you have some teacher-in-service training on how Marxism has affected education in the United States and across the world, because a definite deliberate plan is in effect to affect the pillars of society, and education is the main one, because y'all have the ability to guide these kids in how they're educated and what they learn. Only 18% of our Americans now are proud of America. We need to figure out why. Thank you.
The next speaker is Albert Tummenello.
Madam Chair and the board, my comments will be brief. I've been a resident of the peninsula here, York County and Newport News, for the last 45 years, and during that 45 years, I've seen a huge degradation in what this country was founded on. We've lost our moral compass, it appears to me. And with that, what are the reasons for it? Is it political pressure? Is it money? What is it? So I encourage you to look at these things and be on guard for where we are going in this county. So I'm here to ask a question primarily, and that is this. Madam Chair, have you and the board adopted completely the 2023 model policies as spelled out by the Virginia Department of Education? And if you have, thank you. If you have not, why not? And is there a public record to this account? I admitted, before I came here this evening, I went on your website and went through all the policies, and I saw nothing that would lead me to believe you did. But I am willing to stand correction if that's the case. And I'm seeing some heads shaking, and that's good. So I'd just say in closing that let us return to those moral values and those -- moral values that we grew up with as children. Our kids today need it very much so, and you're the people that can make it happen. And I thank you for what you're doing now, and just keep moving forward, because this is one nation under God, and it starts in the school system and with the families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tummenello.
Good evening. My name is Pam Puchow. During the August Citizens' Comment period, banning books and discouraging vaccines were discussed. Banning books is abhorrent. Parents have the right to determine what their children read, but not what other children read. The quickest way to ensure a child reads something is to tell them they can't. Let your child read a book you find objectionable. Parents, read the book and then discuss it with your child. This teaches the child about differing viewpoints and allows for intelligent discourse. When I was a teen, I read a purely pornographic book. That book had a profound influence on me. It formed the foundation of my adult belief system concerning women's rights. I never wanted any woman to be humiliated and demeaned, as was the woman in the book. I rejected the belief that men should have a right to traffic and slave or forcibly use any woman for their personal gratification. 58 years later, I still believe a woman should have complete autonomy over her own body. Encourage reading about difficult subjects, such as the Holocaust, slavery, genocide, and oppression. We often gain positive results from learning about things that should not be acceptable. Learning about those who are different enlarges our worldview. Books nourish our minds. Fear closes them. Hitler first banned books and then burned them in the streets. Libraries were destroyed. Only books written by Aryan Germans were protected. Is that the direction we want to be headed in? I was born in 1950, when many common vaccines had not yet been developed. My older sister almost died from measles. My younger sister died 12 hours after her birth because Rogam vaccine was not yet available. I went to school with children who got polio, spent time in iron lungs and wore leg braces for the rest of their lives. Those who had chicken pox are now at risk for shingles, an extremely painful nerve disease. Thankfully, we now have a shingles vaccine. Mumps cause sterility in males. Whooping cough, tetanus, and diphtheria can be fatal. COVID vaccines may not keep you from getting the virus, but it should prevent your hospitalization and death. Even if you don't care if your child dies, when an unvaccinated child gets a potentially fatal or debilitating disease, they can infect infants too young to be vaccinated or those who are medically unable to do so. How ignorant and selfish can someone be? If you love your child, you will ensure they all receive the vaccines available to them. Protestant faiths, Islam, Catholicism, Judaism, Hinduism, Jainism, Buddhism, Jehovah's Witnesses, and many more have no prohibitions against vaccination. This is not about religion. It is about preaching fear instead of science to the ignorant and naive. Knowledge is power. Ignorance allows one to be enslaved without ever knowing it is happening until it is too late. And I'd like to make one comment about the First Amendment. It's not only freedom of religion, it is freedom from religion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alexandra Howland.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow York residents. My name is Alexandra Howland, and I am addressing you all today as a York County resident, community member, former teacher at TAB High School, and a member of the LGBTQ community. I am addressing you all today to urge YCSD to repeal the most recent model policies enacted by Yonkin, which dictates that students are essentially property of their parents who do not have their own rights to privacy or protection. During my first year at TAB, although I made friends and had a close relationship with some staff, I still experienced discrimination from students, as well as staff and former administrators, because of my identity as a queer person. During my second year, I witnessed a new colleague who is also queer experience similar discrimination. In each of our situations, none of our experiences were taken seriously, nor were any of these circumstances investigated. Now, if that's how the only queer teachers at a YCSD school are being treated, can you imagine how these students are treating their LGBTQ peers? I want to start by referencing some data points found on GLSEN.org, a national coalition of queer students and educators. According to their studies, the mere presence of a gay-straight alliance in a secondary school has been proven to reduce the number of student tardies and absences among LGBTQ students, as well as having an impact on increased academic performance. Kids, all kids, do better in a space where they are allowed to be themselves, and any loving parent would want that for their child. It is most unfortunate, however, that we live in a world in which not every home is loving or safe, where not all parents accept their children for who they are. The education system and its educators are supposed to provide that safe space away from an unloving home. These policies are highly problematic, considering that YCSD's very own pre-service training includes video modules indicating that LGBTQ-plus students not only face the highest rates of bullying, but also the highest suicide rates. And I know there's a minority here of queer allies, parents who are accepting and who do not -- and who do value their child's individuality and identity, and every single one of them will have grounds for a lawsuit if their child are continually targeted and discriminated against, especially considering the bill's language does indicate that even a cisgender child would need to follow the same process. I have heard from former students at -- from my former students at TAB that there have been cisgender students attempting to follow the same steps to have an official nickname, but have been getting told the form is really only for trans kids. Requiring only the trans students to go through a process that potentially puts them at a higher risk for abuse at home is an act of domestic terrorism. Asking a student to physically erase the name they've written on their work is reductive and also dehumanizing. Every month, you all invite these amazing students into this chamber to applaud their accolades and their service, because your mission statement includes valuing all teachers, students, and staff. If your mission is for all students to feel like they belong, using their names, the ones they chose for themselves because it fits them best, is a great place to start.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howland. I think we had number eight taken, but nobody handed it in.
Good evening to the board. I am here to address some information that I have received regarding staff interaction with candidates in the upcoming elections here in York County. I'm in receipt of an email that was sent by Dr. Carroll. There was some allegation that a candidate who had handed out campaign materials, including a football schedule, was in violation of some policy or law. The email alleged that this candidate had distributed something with the confusing logo of a school logo, which it was apparently not, but at that time in the email, Dr. Carroll suggested that the candidate put either by sticker or some other means the words, "These materials are neither sponsored nor endorsed by York County School Division." I am not sure if this is being done at the board's direction, or if this individual is, you know, overseeing all election information in York County. I assume that, being your employee, that you have some knowledge of this. I'm not sure. I can only imagine that perhaps it is due to the code, Virginia code, that prohibits political activities of employees. Subsection F talks about the employees of a locality are prohibited from suggesting or implying that they are endorsed either as a campaign, a party, or a candidate. I wanted to also bring to your attention that there is a member on the board who is perhaps violating the very thing that we have been alerted to from another candidate. This candidate is using the YCSD email account and phone number that is posted on YCSD's contact information. I looked at the most recent filing on comment to see if perhaps there was a disclosure for in-kind donation of either office space or, you know, email or phone. There was no disclosure for that. I wanted to bring this up because if you look on the website, you can see that the YCSD email is being used. You can call this number and email this number, and we will bring you a sign. There's another one here posted, same information. And I just feel that there is unequal application. If we have people, you know, investigating candidates, perhaps it should apply to all candidates. It looks like the thumb is on the scale for certain candidates in York County and against others, and I think it is a very unpleasant, if not illegal, situation.
Next move into -- actually, I close public participation of comments of citizens. And next, we'll move into our matters by board members. Richardson.
Yes, I have none.
You have no matters?
No, no matters discussed.
All right. Mr. Schaefer.
All right. Before I cover what all I've done since school started, I just wanted to address a few of the comments that were made tonight by the public. First, I want to remind everyone that we are either number two or number three, whichever poll you look at, in the state of Virginia for school divisions. We are number one in our region, so ma'am, that's something to be proud of. Also, we're getting some flack about the superintendent, but I tell you what, there is 132 school divisions in the state of Virginia. This year, 50 of them, almost half, have superintendents that are either their first year or their second year. That's not where we want to be. In order to maintain the excellence of York County School Division, I think that we need to have the best people that we can get, and that we ought to pay them commensurate to what their experience is. And we do that with teachers, we do that with assistant principals, we do it with principals, and we do it with school board staff. And as far as the books go, if there's any books that irritate anyone, we have the book challenge system in place. Anyone can challenge a book. Now, I said last year at one of the school board meetings that the principals are the gatekeeper for all the new books coming in. Now, I don't know when that book had shown up, but the principals, and we don't have any activist principals in York County, in any of the 19 schools, but I think that our principals are good sentinels to keep after those things. And we do comply with all the governors. And we do comply with all the governor's proposed policies and the rules and changes and all that stuff. We made sure, in fact, I believe, wasn't it at the last school board meeting that we approved some changes to make sure we complied 100%? So we do that. Now, get into the fun stuff. First day of school was August 28th. I got to go to all four of my schools, and I tell you what, I was worried about transportation this year. I thought, oh, things are going so good, this is going to be such a good year. Now the buses are going to be late or something, you know? But as it turns out, for my four schools, which is Waller Mill, McGruder Elementary Schools, Queens Lake Middle School, and Bruton High School, there was only two buses that were 10 minutes late all day, which I'd say that's pretty good for a first day of school. On September 11th, I got to visit all my schools with Dr. Shandor and Doug Holroyd, who's going to be the supervisor for District One. He's running unopposed, so he wanted to see the schools, so we took him around to the schools, and he had a good time. On the 15th, got to attend the Military Appreciation Game at Bailey Field, and even though I didn't have a dog in the hunt on that one, I guess I supported, I was rooting for the defense most of the time, but TAB came out ahead. So, yeah, I supported TAB. There you go.
So far, so good.
And then on the 21st, I got to, as I told you, go to the York Foundation for Public Education meeting, which I'm just amazed at what those people have done with so few people. But they really do support the schools. And as always, I'm going to send out the invitation to everyone that if you would like to see what's going on with the schools, volunteer. That's the best way to do it. Go in, read the kids. I mean, I'm partial to elementary school because I'm smarter than they are, but debatable, yeah. But love to read to the kids. I mean, there is nothing better, because when kids learn how to read, it opens up a world for them, and it's just the best thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yeah, I'll be brief. The start of the school year, I've enjoyed being able to see stuff both in person and on social media and different things like that. I want to highlight all the work the teachers, the counselors, all staff, bus drivers, custodians are doing to make the schools a safe place for all students to be and for them to be successful in the classroom and all the hard work they do and the way they collaborate with families and community members here in York County. That's what our focus should be, and I think that's what we are doing. I'd highlight some of the sporting events I've gone to or some of the different athletics going on. We've got football, and I hope I don't forget anything. Football, volleyball, golf, cheerleading, field hockey, cross country. I don't know that I'm forgetting anything. We've got debate and Scholastic Bowl, oh, the VHSL One Act Drama Programs are getting ready to select their one act and prepare those to go to those competitions. The bands are performing, we've got clubs, we've got touring. There's so many things to go on to connect students to their schools, and we know that students perform better when they're more connected to the school, and we know that students perform better when their families are connected to the school, and the outreach we're doing as a county to do that is fantastic. And I just want to continue to highlight those things as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, just to echo what Mark and Brett had mentioned, you know, one of the things that keeps coming up as I visit schools, particularly with administrators, is capacity. And we're, you know, one vacancy is one too many, right? But we've got excellent capacity, particularly with regard to certified teachers, that makes a world of difference, particularly with regard to safety, and things have been very, very smooth as a result. One quick thing, I did want to commend the division for the Military Appreciation Night. I'm a veteran, former Army officer, and it was a wonderful experience celebrating the 50th anniversary of that rivalry, York and TAB. But just as importantly, I got to visit with those young men and women who supported the event, particularly sailors, airmen, and marines, and it was wonderful to flash my dog tags and pay them all a little bit of a visit. They had a wonderful time. We treated them to pizza and soda and some other things, and it was first class, and I know we'll continue to grow on that, and I'm waiting for that F-22 flyover, perhaps even F-35. I got a nephew that flies an F-35, right? Let's see what we can do. It was, it was marvelous, and again, greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. I know it was a great time back to school. Dr. Shandor and I got to tour some schools the third week of school. It was great being in the buildings and talking to administrators and teachers and students, got to see some engaging student activities, lots of group work, lots of kids doing some activities in the hall and those kinds of things. One of the things that was really great to see was our student success coaches, and to be able to talk to them and listen to how they're capitalizing on helping these kids with absenteeism. I know that's one of the focuses this year. So really, we're just listening to just what their process is going to be to keep kids connected, so I'm very, very excited about that. I can't wait to see the results that they're getting from that. Being inside Seaford was really great. I just want to say thank you again for the patience, our Bulldog families, and from everybody I've talked to just in my travels, it was worth it. And again, the school isn't set to be done until, I think we've got a couple more weeks, a delay on something being delivered, but I can't wait to see when that school's fully finished. They're holding an extended open house this week on Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00 for families to just get some more time in that building, instead of just the quick open house they got before that first day of school. So I know that feedback is going to be wonderful, and for them to just kind of go through the library, the library is absolutely amazing, and just all the light in the cafeteria. I know I keep talking about the light in the cafeteria, but it's really great. Again, just again grateful for that Military Appreciation Game that we went to. It was very, very well done by staff, and you can tell that they put their heart and soul in those, every little detail that was there, so that was really great. York Elementary held their literacy night last week, Wild About Literacy, and they had 180 families. And one of the things that I keep finding with these family engagement events is it's not just the second grader coming with a parent. It's parents coming with the elementary school kid and bringing the older kids, and those older kids are going back and connecting to the teachers that they had before. And so again, when I think about connection and I think about that engagement, it makes me really happy. But 180 families is really, really great, especially for this crazy, busy time of year, so I'm really glad to see those events continue. York Middle Schools trying something new, they're doing an open gym night to bring some kids in and are having parents help volunteer with that, so I think that's going to be really, really great to see some of those things. Again, signed up to do mock interviews. I know Mr. Myatt mentioned that with our Engaged In program, and again, I encourage community members to get involved with that program. I know it's one of the things I enjoy doing every year. My husband ends up taking a day off because he really likes to do it, do those mock interviews. He's very good at it. He's way better than I am. But again, I encourage fellow Board members in our community to do that as well. And then we had, York Elementary's got their STEM Night coming up as well, so I'm excited to see that. I also would like to share some information about our Video English Education Advisory Board, and so the purpose of that is to be, it's going to be composed of parent representation, relevant business and industry military representatives, higher education staff, school division leadership, classroom teachers, and video English program team and literacy experts. It'll include teachers leading and supporting implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. We've heard a lot about that recently. And they'll provide ongoing one-on-one and full panel feedback to the revision team leader, and it will include practical perspectives on standards and recommended revisions. Our staff from York County School Divisions have been selected to serve on that. There's Dr. Catherine Crissio from TAB Elementary School, she's a reading specialist, and Ms. Candy Skinner, our chief academic officer. So we're really excited to see that. I know we're seeing a lot of expansion with English as a Second Language program. So I thank everybody for their comments and their matters by Board members this evening. Next, we'll move into financial matters, and Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Madam Chair, I figured you were going to hear me talk enough about that. That was about what we could talk about. So the certified claims for payment, we had instructional-related expenditures that totaled That included payments to International Baccalaureate, $12,200 for the annual membership, just to name a few. Learning A to Z, $65,675 for RAS Plus subscription renewal. Lexia Learning, $18,550 for the letters, participation, and training materials. ODP Business Solutions, $11,900 for K through three handwriting booklets. The Treasure of Virginia, $38,250 for Virtual Virginia. Fall enrollments for classes that we don't offer, that we offer or allow kids, children to take. West Music, $21,900 for miscellaneous music instruments. And our technology-related expenditures totaled $474,455 and include payments to Cox Communications, for example, $37,180 for internet services. Frontline Technologies, $162,300 for substitute management and HR management systems. Kronos, $78,900 for time management system. Mid-Atlantic Installers, $11,200 for fire security and inspection services. Virginia Business Systems, $36,100 for July and August copier services. Our food service expenditures total approximately $93,500 and includes payments to Sedexo, $40,800 for August food service operations. Global Payments, $16,500 for food service point-of-sale system. And Gold Creek Foods, $13,600 for USDA foods. And Made Right Foods, $22,600 for USDA foods. And operational-related expenditures totaled $147,675 and included payments, for example, to Dominion Energy for $120,200 for utility services. Republic Services, $13,100 for solid waste disposal. And SHI International, $14,375 for maintenance connection contract renewal. And payments related to administration totaled $622,650 and include payments to Brown Edwards, $19,700 for audit services. Virginia Risk Management Association, that took the bulk of that, for $588,450 for property, liability, automobile, and workers' comp insurance. Payments related to instruction totaled $2,147,770, and the big one was the Seaford Elementary renovation, that was $1,012,275. Harbor Mechanical, $738,975 for HVAC replacement at TAB Middle School. We paid RMM Architects $10,245 for the Seaford renovation design work, because that project was completing. And Centennial Contractors, $273,850 for renovation work on the Grafton Bethel Gym and Grafton Complex Auxiliary Gym. Excel Paving, $58,425 for repair and overlay of the rear access road at York Middle School that they just put in. ACES, $54,000 for building automation controls at Seaford Elementary. And significant changes related to the operating budget for August revenues. State revenue for August 2023 increased by more than 1.2 million when compared to the previous year, and that's the result of the 5% compensation adjustment and increase in student enrollment. And for expenditures, instructional expenditures for August 2023 increased by approximately 2.5 million when compared to the previous August of 2022, and that's due to tuition payment of 1.5 million that was paid to New Horizons in August, and last year the payment was paid in September, so that was the reason in that difference. The increase also attributed to the increase in compensation benefits for FY24 as well. Significant changes relating to food service budget, there were none. And this Resolution 23-59 requires the Board's approval, authorizing procurements of more than $50,000, and there are six items on the resolutions totaling 2.56 million, and the details of all this can be viewed on Board Docs as well. Madam Chair, I now move for approval of financial matters as listed.
I'll second. Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the financial matters as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. We're having an issue with Board Docs tonight.
Yeah, nothing's coming on.
We'll go ahead and do our oral vote. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Garaltz?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we'll move into our consent calendar. First, we have approval of personnel actions, approval of donations in the amount of $3,243, approval of the FY24 Pay Plan updates, and I will need a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I move that we pull the personnel actions on the consent calendar and vote on that separately if we could.
Okay. All right, well, if you would, give me a motion to approve the consent calendar with approval of donations in the amount of $3,243 and approval of FY24 Pay Plan.
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the consent calendar for B, consideration of donations, $3,243, and the consideration of approval of the FY24 Pay Plan updates.
Second. Ms. Ford?
Yes. A motion was passed by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve the financial, to approve the consent calendar with the exception of personnel actions. Board members, you may cast your vote, hopefully.
I don't think so.
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Garaltz?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed, five to zero.
Madam Chair, I now move to approve the personnel actions as listed.
Mr. Myatt, can you give us a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the personnel actions as listed. Mr. Schaefer? Mr. Schaefer?
I abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Higginbotham?
I abstain.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Ms. Garaltz?
Yes.
The motion passed three to zero with two abstained votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. All right, next we'll move into our action item.
I need to be polled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Schaefer?
He was polled. It was Mr. Myatt that was not.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Myatt?
Yes, thank you.
Now we've got it. Thank you.
All right, next we'll move into our action items. We have Approval Proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, October 2023. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garaltz. Over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim. It's important for parents, students, teachers, coaches, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. Let the month of October 2023 be recognized as Bullying Prevention Month with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in all York County schools during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second. Oh, wait. Yeah, I need a motion in a second to approve the proclamation.
I move to approve the Proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, October 2023.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Was that Mr. Higginbotham that seconded?
I made the motion. Mr. Myatt provided the second.
Thank you. Board Docs is not cooperating tonight. Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the Proclamation for Bullying Prevention Month. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Garaltz?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, move into our policy discussion. We have none. Policy first reading, also none. Policy second reading, and we have approval of expedited second reading of Policy BFC. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garaltz. I'm going to ask Ms. Melanie Berry, our school board attorney, to share information about Policy BFC. Ms. Berry?
Good evening, Ms. Garaltz, Board members. Tonight, I bring you Policy BFC, Policy Adoption, for the Board's Review. The proposed changes expands the types of changes a superintendent is allowed to make to board policies, adding typographical and nomenclature changes to what's currently allowed grammatical and formatting changes. We're recommending expedited approval of this at this time, and I'm available for any questions.
So the only change here is just adding the nomenclature?
Nomenclature and typographical, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right, can I get a motion in a second to approve expedited second reading of Policy BFC?
Move we approve the expedited second reading of Policy BFC?
I second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the expedited second reading of Policy BFC. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Garaltz?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. All right, next we have our report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Garaltz, and again, good evening, Board members. As I shared earlier this month, at the September work session during the first week of school, I had the opportunity, I should say, myself and my team had the opportunity to get in all 19 schools, transportation and visit maintenance. We had a great start to the school year. Since that time, I've been able to visit several classrooms, with many of you actually, and observe some of the lessons and engagement between our students and teachers. This is one of my favorite things to do, and I'm looking forward to Wednesday, as I'll be visiting a few of our schools as well, and I don't have a set schedule to that. I like to sort of pop in and get in there and observe, and there's some great things going on in our schools, and I'm really proud of that work that we're doing. I also want to congratulate Mr. Myatt, who's been named the Chairman of the Board of Trustees to New Horizons. Congratulations to the staff and the other superintendents in our region and on the peninsula and other Board members, looking forward to your leadership. Also, although we recognize October is Bullying Prevention Month throughout the entire school year, our administrators, teachers, we continue to stress the importance of treating others with respect and strive to develop impactful ways to better maintain a safe environment where our students can thrive. In closing, I want to thank all the YCSD employees for all they've done to successfully begin the school year. Their efforts are appreciated by all. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. As a reminder, our next work session will be held on Monday, October 9th, at 6:00 p.m. downstairs.
down stairs here at York Hall. We're now in need of two closed sessions, and the first one relates to prospective candidates for the appointment to the Gifted Education Advisory Committee and the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. So, could a board member please make a motion to take us into closed session?
Yes, I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session for the consideration and discussion regarding prospective candidates for appointment to the Gifted Education Advisory Committee and the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Hickambottom and seconded by Mr. Schaefer for the board to meet in closed session as stated. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hickambottom?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Garalt?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. The board is now in closed session.
Thank you.